Wonderful, so we'll go to Raquel when you're ready.
Hola Helen.
Hola.
Muchas gracias por todo. Siento una gran transformación desde que estoy contigo.
Thank you for everything. I really feel a great change since I am with you.
Thank you, thank you.
Y ahora, lo que sí me gustaría trabajar, tengo dos temas.
I have two subjects that I want to work on.
Can we just choose one today to keep the times shorter?
Sí, sí, sí. Estoy... Creo que tienen que ver los dos, entonces...
I think both are related.
Okay.
Mi sensación de estrés, de no tener tiempo para nada...
I'm feeling a bit stressed because I have no time for anything.
Y bueno, viene de la creencia de no ser suficiente.
It comes from the belief that not being enough.
Creo, creo que viene de ahí.
I think it comes from there.
¿Y...?
What's the major emotion that you feel around? You said stress, but that's more of a sensation in the body. ¿Is there an emotion that's underneath that?
Ansiedad. Y creo que lo que siento detrás de todo esto es... No me siento suficiente, no siento el cuerpo como un lugar seguro.
Maybe it's anxiety and also what I believe is behind all this is that I don't feel the body to be a safe place.
So mainly fear, anxiety, fear, same thing, right? We could work on that fear if that feels good to you.
Perfecto, vale, sí lo siento.
Yes, I feel that. Thank you.
Okay. So what does that anxiety, that fear say? What's the belief underneath it? Not about the body, not about the world, just how it feels about itself, anxiety, fear. And take your time, there's no rush.
Siento presión en el pecho.
I feel some tension on the chest.
Cierto temblor en el cuerpo también.
And trembling in the body as well.
So is there some kind of belief that you're not safe, do you feel, or that you're in danger?
No soy consciente de ella.
I am not conscious of this.
So if there's some fear, it's got to be something about your existence, your survival, something like that, right?
Sí, de pequeña me quedé muerta, muy pequeña, con un añito, sí.
Yes, when I was a child with one year, I just felt death. I truly felt death for a while.
Sí, me acaba de venir ahora.
I just remembered it, reminded.
Okay. How does it feel then if we question, "Is it really true I can die?"
Siento temblor.
I am trembling.
Do you want to work with this question or do you want to choose another question?
Sí, no, no, esta está bien, sí.
This is okay, yes.
Okay, so let's ask this question and anyone else that wants to as well. Any of these questions that we're asking with any of these beautiful beings, we can all ask if it's relevant to us, we can ask the question too. Perhaps especially this one because it's something that we all have fear about. So let's just sit with this question, you and me. "Is it really true I can die?" And we're not gonna exclude any answer. We're just gonna allow them all to come. We're not trying to make answers appear, let's just see, see what happens. You've mentioned already some trembling in the body. "Is it really true I can die?"
Siento pájaros.
I hear some birds.
Yeah. So kind of a phenomenal answer from outside, yeah. And just gently coming back to the question.
Siento el pecho se va abriendo.
My chest is opening somehow.
And a kind of energetic answer, some energy moving. "Is it really true I can die?"
Hay muchísimo silencio.
There is a lot of silence.
No hay respuesta.
And no answer.
No phenomenal answer, but an answer of silence also, right? Silence is the non-phenomenal answer, the real self. Just gently coming back to the question. "Is it really true I can die?"
Siento mucha expansión, el cuerpo casi no tiene límites, empiezas...
I feel a lot of expansion, like the body has no limits, it starts to expand it.
Just staying with the question. Beautiful answers coming, but let's stay with the question, let the question do the work.
Siento ganas de llorar y de reír a la vez.
I feel like I want to cry and smile at the same time.
It's quite common, we might have two answers going on at the same time, or three. And just gently coming back to the question. "Is it true I can die?"
Silencio, hay vacío y hay mucha calma, mucha tranquilidad.
Silence, emptiness, and a lot of calmness.
So as we ask this question, we're actually beginning to experience that we can't die. Even the body feels more limitless, feels less solid. We might not even be sure if the body dies actually. Maybe it just kind of begins to disintegrate. It was put together and then for a while it stays and then for a little while it comes apart again. And noticing, if we don't challenge this assumption, then we experience that we can die, the fear, the anxiety, the stress of trying to survive, trying to improve our existence so that we feel safer, all of that. Beautiful. So maybe stay with this question, this is a really good one, to really let go of this fear once and for all. It is possible for human beings to live without fear when this idea has completely gone.
Sí, muchísimas gracias.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Wonderful. We will go to Chus. I hope I'm saying that right, Chus?
Sí, gracias. Hola.
Hola.
Pues el sentimiento que a mí se me repite muchas veces es la soledad.
The feeling that I have repeatedly in my life is loneliness.
Loneliness, yeah. Let's ask a question about loneliness then, because it was a very big thing for me. I spent a lot of time feeling very, very lonely and I really had to question this. Is it true? Because loneliness is the idea that I'm alone, right? Can you see that? So let's challenge that. "Is it really true that I'm alone?" Or which question feels better? "Is it really true I'm alone?" Or "Is it really true I can be alone?" Or maybe a different question altogether?
Es realmente cierto que pueda estar sola porque me genera una resistencia que dice sí. En ese momento sí, estoy sola.
Is really true that I can be alone because this generates in me a resistance like saying, "Yes, yes, I am alone."
This is the question and this is the one, yeah? So let's ask it together. "Is it really true I can be alone?" And as always, just ask the question.
Sí, la respuesta que me sale es muchas veces.
Yeah, the answer that comes is a lot of times.
Yeah. Just allowing that answer and coming back to the question gently. "Is it really true I can be alone?"
Pues estoy sintiendo calor y me quito la chaqueta.
I am feeling now heat, I have to take out my jacket.
It's normal because as we're open with the question, some energy can move and we can allow that energy to move in the openness of the question. So just coming back to the question. "Is it really true I can be alone?" Just a reminder, no more hands up now please, because we won't have time for anyone else after this, thanks.
Me sale como una pena y siento la soledad como por la barriga plexo.
It comes like sadness and I feel the loneliness like in the stomach and in the plexo, solar plexus.
Yeah. So kind of a sensation as an answer. Doesn't feel so pleasant, but gently coming back to the question. "Is it really true I can be alone?"
Hay como unas ganas de llorar, ¿cómo decir? Un poco acogedoras.
I feel like to cry like something that doesn't hold me.
And if you need to cry, it's okay, you're supported and loved here. Take your time, if it comes, tears come. Just coming back to the question gently when you can. Again, seeing what happens. Take your time. "Is it really true I can be alone?"
Conecto con una delo muy grande de amar. Sé que está dentro de mí, pero en esta emoción siento como que algo fuera tiene que permitirme amar.
I feel like a longing to love, like something within me has to allow it, this.
So what this is really about even is not perhaps loneliness, but perhaps love. Can you feel that somewhere? There's a longing for love more than anything.
Yes, this.
How about we change the question then to... And tell me if it feels right or wrong, the question, to... "Is it really true I need to get love or receive love?"
I have to receive love?
Let's ask that question because if I need to receive love from outside, from other people, sometimes I might not get it. But if we can work with this question and come to see love is gonna come from the inside, then the feeling of loneliness will disappear.
La pregunta es, ¿es realmente cierto que tengo que recibir amor?
Is the question, "Is it really true that I have to receive love?"
Yeah, if that feels good to you, a good question. Then let's go with that. "Is it really true I have to receive love?"
Me sale como un punto de enfado.
It comes like some anger within you.
Some, somewhat, sorry, hello?
Anger like, "I'm not good with this."
Just noticing that answer and coming back gently to the question anyway. "Is it really true I have to receive love?" What if it's not true that I have to even receive love? What if love is already here?
Cuando escucho que el amor está ya aquí, hay dos sensaciones encontradas, una de alivio de ya estar aquí y otra de... Pero yo quiero compartirlo.
When I listen that "love is already here," I have like two opposite reactions. One like being relieved because love is already here and the other, but I want to serve it.
Let's change the question one last time. If it feels good to you, let's change it to... "Is it really true love's not here right now?" How does that feel?
Can we tell you that?
I am crying.
I would take that as a sign that's the right question here. So let's stay with this question. "Is it really true love's not here right now?" Take your time. Allowing the emotion to come if it needs to.
Siento tristeza y mis manos van a mis brazos porque tengo ganas de sentir touch.
I feel sadness and my hands go to my arms like I have, I need to feel this touch.
"Is it really true love isn't here right now?"
Que dolor.
I am feeling pain.
Delo del amor.
This longing for love.
Just coming back to the question. "Is it really true love isn't here right now?"
Ahora siento tranquilidad.
Now I feel calm.
And just coming to the question again gently. As always, "Is it really true love isn't here right now?"
Me sale no sé.
It's like, "I don't know."
And that's good, right? Because before we did know, we were certain, I know that love isn't here right now and I know I have to try and find it. Is there any relaxation in the body?
Sí, porque antes estaba sintiendo como un vacío que ansiaba muy fuerte llenarse y en la tranquilidad o en no sé, el cuerpo está relajado, no hay ese vacío.
Yes, because before I was feeling like an emptiness, like I needed to be filled. But now in the "I don't know," I don't need to feel this emptiness anymore.
Beautiful. So stay with this question. Perhaps while I move on to the next person, you stay with this question and stay with it each day a little bit until you're really certain that love is here right now. It will move from a feeling of "it's really not here, I have to get it" to... "I don't know, actually," to a certainty, "this love is here right now already." And that...
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
That longing for love will disappear when you know it's here already. Very well done, beautiful, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to Maria Luisa.
Hola.
Hola.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Estoy un poco nerviosa, eh?
I am a bit nervous.
Hablar delante de tanta gente...
To speak in front of so many people and expose this.
Well, there's only one of us here, so it's okay.
Sí. Muy bien. Yo quiero, me gustaría trabajar una creencia que me ha perseguido toda mi vida, que es la de...
To work on a belief that has been with me all my life and it is...
Es la de que no poder despertar en esta vida.
That I cannot be awakened in this life.
El despertar ha sido como salió en el retiro que me dijiste, una obsesión para mí y ahora lo vivo últimamente con mucha más paz y aceptación.
Awakening as it came in the retreat, it has been a constant in my life, the pursuit for it. And now I am living it a little bit more like with acceptance.
Pero sí que, refiriéndome a lo que has hablado antes de los contrastes, de esta dualidad, yo vivo mucho esto dentro de mí, estos contrastes. Tengo claridades, pero seguidamente automáticamente hay una contracción y un bloqueo. Y esto es como que afianza más esa creencia de no poder.
Exactly as you spoke before, there is like a moment of clarity and next a moment of contraction. And this duality is like in Intensifying this belief.
Entonces, bueno, es una sensación de que yo no soy capaz, de que hay algo... Siempre he tenido esta sensación de que hay algo malo en mí que me bloquea en esa entrega y en esa apertura y esa vivencia, ¿no?
There is a belief, a sensation in me that there is something wrong in me and that then I am living this belief and terms about awakening, yes.
Quizás cuando me relaciono con esta creencia me aparece mucha tristeza.
And maybe when I come to this belief, what comes as emotion is sadness.
Pero me gustaría realmente poder traspasar esa creencia que yo lo represento como eso, como un bloqueo que hay dentro de mí, que esté bloqueando, bloqueándome al amor.
But I want to go over this belief, like for me now it seems like a block. It's like I am blocking myself towards love.
Let's ask this question then together. "Is it true there's something wrong with me?" How about that? How does that feel? Does that feel like the right question to ask?
Sí, de hecho yo me la he hecho esta pregunta, pero no he logrado romperla.
In fact, I already did myself that question, but I didn't succeed in breaking it.
Let's spend some time with it together then and see what happens. "Is it really true there's something wrong with me?" And this is everyone's question, I'm sure. So anyone that wants to ask along with us is good, can do that. Let's ask this question. "Is it really true there's something wrong with me?" And then just sharing the answers like everyone else. Not making answers appear, just gently asking and seeing what happens.
Conecto con esa profunda tristeza.
I connect with this deeper sadness.
So an emotional answer that we can allow the best that we can. Doesn't feel good, but just allowing and then gently coming back and asking again. "Is it really true there's something wrong with me?"
Siento que hay esperanza.
I feel that there is hope.
Let's not stop there, let's carry on with the question. Hope is better than sadness, feels nicer, but still... "Is it really true there's something wrong with me?"
No, yo sé que no, pero me arrastra la tristeza, no sé por qué.
I know it's not true, but still sadness is living now, I don't know why.
That's okay, sometimes in the question being asked, these emotions that have been stuck in the body and the system can finally begin to move. Let's just stay with the question anyway. Really curious now, as curious as you can be. "Is it really true there's something wrong with me?"
No, no, no lo hay, pero estoy bloqueando y creo que es por miedo.
No, there is nothing, but I am blocking it and I think it is because I am afraid, fear.
What are you blocking? Love?
Del amor.
Yes, love.
Let's ask the question then. Let's change the question to... "Do I need to be afraid of love?" How does that feel? "Is it true I need to be scared of love?"
No, realmente no.
No, it's not...
Stay with this question anyway, just for a few minutes and see what happens. "Is it true I need to be scared of love?"
No.
No or no? Is it a no?
Salgo de la sensación o la emoción de esa tristeza o esa lloranza o... de esa tristeza o esa lloranza o o ese no poder alcanzarlo, ¿no?, esta vivencia.
I'm not going out from this feeling of this sadness or this feeling that I cannot reach it, that thing.
Is love outside of you or inside of you? Is love inside or outside? Is it something you have to reach?
Dentro. No.
Inside.
Then what can stop it?
Me vuelve a venir la sensación de miedo.
It comes again, eh, the fear.
No me lo, es como que no me lo permitiera vivir.
Like I, I don't allow myself to live it.
Could it be that you are that love and you're allowing, as love, you're allowing yourself to feel fear?
No.
Love would... Love would completely allow fear to exist, wouldn't it? Love would not try to get rid of even fear. Love would not try to get rid of a separate sense of someone that's scared. It would totally allow it to be.
Coggo esto, sí.
Yes, I am taking this.
So when you notice this feeling next, maybe just notice you're not the one scared, you are the one allowing that to be there. A bigger version of yourself. Allowing the smaller one.
Puedo coger esto en mi corazón, sí.
Yes, I can admit that in my heart.
Beautiful, beautiful. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you to you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Devdas. I hope I'm saying that right, Devdas. You're still muted there.
Hola.
Hola.
Hola, Helena.
Nice to meet you.
Igualmente. Este, es la primera vez que participo aquí.
It's my first time. Welcome, welcome.
Este, y el, el sentimiento que, que me viene seguido eh, y que quisiera, bueno, trabajar es el, el miedo, este, y el sentimiento de, como de invalidación.
What I want to work today and it's coming once and again for me is the feeling of, of fear and also not being valid, being unworthy.
Which feeling is strongest? The feeling of fear or the feeling of unworthiness?
Supongo que el, el del miedo es más como una, como el sentimiento de, de raíz. Eh, sobre todo, me, me pasa que me aparece mucho a la noche eh, cuando estoy durmiendo.
I think the fear is the root feeling and it happens that it comes at night when I am sleeping.
So let's look at the fear then together. What does fear say to you? What does fear believe to be true? Take your time with it.
¿Viste esa sensación de... como de invalidación, de, de que, de que no lo hago bien?
It's this feeling that I am not worthy, I am not doing it correctly, as it should be.
Let's, let's ask this question then. Is it really true I'm not worthy? Does that feel a good question for you? Just asking this question. Is it really true I'm not worthy? Or not good enough, whichever? And seeing all the answers that come, just sharing the answers like we have done before. Not working hard together. We're just sitting together and relaxing with this question. Is it really true I'm not worthy?
Sí, durante la reunión estuve eh, haciendo esta práctica eh, con las, con los demás participantes y sentía esa sensación como de, como que ese, esa angustia, esa invalidación se cae.
I happened in this practice during this meeting with other participants and I was feeling that this angst, this fear was like falling out.
And just then staying with this question, let's just stay with this question together. See, all answers that come, we just let them come. Emotions, thoughts, sensations, all of it. And let's just give some time and space for this question. Is it really true I'm not worthy? Let that question sink deep inside. Is it really true I'm not worthy?
En esta sensación de, de, de vacío y de, y como que esa pregunta, eh, pero esa, esa emoción es inválida. No, no, no es real.
There is a feeling of emptiness and also the feeling that this question is not valid, is not real.
Do you feel like you want to ask a different question? Or it feels like the right question for now? Or has it...
Sí, esa es la pregunta correcta porque es lo que, es la emoción que, que me persigue eh, de dormido y, y de despierto.
Eh, yes, I think it is the right question because it's the emotion that is with me, being awake or asleep.
So I would stay with this question for five or 10 minutes now and every day for at least five or 10 minutes, stay, staying with this question. Write it down as well, because you'll forget at times when mind is doing its talking. And, um, whenever you want to as well throughout the rest of the day, just gently asking this question. Is it, is it really true I'm not worthy? Just gently dropping the question in like you drop a little stone into a pond, a lake of water. But do the 30 days consistently, yeah? 30 days in a row of asking. And after 30 days, you'll be having so much fun, you won't want to stop the question. You might not believe that now, but... Wonderful.
Okay. And de una pregunta. Yo me, cuando me voy a dormir, por ahí la emoción eh, es fuerte y, y confieso que durante mi, mi estadía en la cama pongo tu satsang constantemente.
One question. When I go to sleep, this emotion is, is, is strong with me and I have to confess when I am at bed, I, I listen to your satsangs constantly.
Everyone, everyone always says to me, "You make me fall asleep." And it's okay. It's, eh, when we're relaxing into sleep, sometimes emotions can come to the surface stronger or sometimes during the night after we've slept a few hours, some strong emotion can come because the body's more relaxed. So it's okay totally to, um, listen to satsang or do whatever feels calming and helpful. But try also to ask this question. Um, the last thought you have in your head before you go to sleep. Ask this question before you... And if you can remember, write it by, on a piece of paper by your bed. Make it, try to make it the first thing in the morning as well. You'll find it changes a lot. Uh, fear, fear and unworthiness were my best friends. Unwanted friends, but best friends for a long time. But they have completely gone. And I have new friends now. So it's good. Same thing will happen to you if you do the same thing I've done. With 30 days consistently.
Okay.
Thank you. Good to talk to you. Gracias. Thank you. And we will finish with Priscilla. Hi, love.
Hi, God. What would you like to say today? So, let me just... And you hear her. Okay. So, at the beginning of the session, I just started... Wow, okay, so, jeez. I've been working on it for this entire hour and a half and I, it had improved and, oh. Okay, it's, it's, I'm not safe. I started thinking about the elections in the US and... Um, okay, so, I'm not safe, um...
Is it coming from fear? Is it fear that, a major emotion that, or what, what's the emotion?
Um, yeah, fear. But when, as we were going around with all the other, um, people, so I was kind of checking it out against different things. So the one who was looking at dying specifically, there was, um, not that fear wasn't there, but there was a being able to step back from that. So that was the first place I was able to even step back enough to, to even hardly ask, because I'd be saying, "Is it true I'm not, is it true, um, I'm not safe?" And all I would hear is "I'm not safe" and all these sensations, sensations. "Is it true I'm not safe?" And, you know, okay, so. Then, um, the, someone asked about, um, uh, various behaviors in the life, um, being, trying to be good enough. Yes, all of that is, is combined with it. So I'm not good enough, I'm not safe because I'm not good enough. Yes, definitely, it's like big crunch. Um, and, uh, then, um, someone was asking about, um, love and again, there was some ability to step back and it's like, okay, I can see that love can't, can't be separate from... I don't know about that. There's, you know, I can't quite get it out. There were, okay, I'm stopped there. That might be the actual fear that I could be separate from love, I think.
Is that what feels most relevant right now to look at? Or which one feels most important?
Um... Yeah, I think that. Um... Yeah, because the, yeah, I, I think... I don't know, on, on the one hand, that one felt like, no, I can see that I can't be separate, separate from love and it was, but I can't even hardly speak that now, so I don't even...
Yeah, and we don't...
...with that.
We need it to be more than just a vague feeling. We need it to be a feeling of certainty. I could never be separate from that love. So if you want to, we can ask this question together.
It, yeah, if, yeah. Okay, um, but it feels like it, it is fear that's like driving everything. But it's not fear of some random accident. It's fear of some type of unsafety that is related to other people, like not being accepted, not being loved, not being enough, not being something like that. It's fear of all of that kind of stuff.
How about the question, asking if there are any other beings at all? How about that? Does that feel... And don't let me give you the question, just feel it out and see. Because even the idea that there are other beings out there uh, can sometimes be the, uh, the, the way that the fear is showing up.
Yeah, and it's so intense, I can't really think.
Is it fear you're feeling right now?
Yeah.
Let's go with the fear then. Let's ask the fear, what it wants to say. What is it shouting at you right now? That you're not safe or what is it saying?
Actually, right, it's not exactly that because that doesn't have quite the... It is saying, okay, it's fear saying something like, um... Oh, right now it's saying, "Don't talk." It's like throat closed up and...
Something about self-expression? That it's not safe to express yourself or how does it present itself?
Yeah, it, yeah, I think, I think there's, yeah, that's what's here right now. I think that it's, yeah, that's good. Right, it's not safe to express.
Let's go with that then. Is that true, that it's not safe to express yourself? Again, just allowing all the answers. The first one will probably be the emotion of fear, the first answer.
Breathing tightness, right, yeah. Terror, yeah. Pulling back, contracting inward, yeah.
And just back to the question. Allowing the answers, but bringing the attention back to the question. Is it really true it's not safe to express myself?
Head moves, the... Right, um... Like deer in headlights, can't, you know, can't, I can't, can't.
So a feeling, a feeling, right? A feeling of, I can't, it's okay. Just another answer.
Okay.
And gently coming back to the question. Is it really true, you can't, excuse me, is it really true it's not safe to express myself?
There's some breathing in and like taking breath in, like the refreshment of even the possibility of not knowing about that.
Wonderful. And just enjoying that and also just coming back to the question. Is it really true it's not safe to express myself?
Like quiet.
Is it really true it's not safe to express myself?
Breathing slower.
Breathing is slower, did you say?
Yeah.
Calmer, yeah?
There's some like things, like tightness in my hands coming out. But it doesn't feel as gripping, it feels maybe just like releasing.
Yeah, so in the openness of the question, we can let these things move, these energies move. Yeah, just coming back gently to the question.
Heard a little teeny peep of the words I'm okay. Really, they're there in the back somewhere.
Just another answer, a nicer feeling answer, but still, just another answer, yeah. All are valid, all are welcome. Is it really true it's not safe to express myself?
Child pounding, having a tantrum and pounding on something.
There's some memories perhaps coming back, yeah, some feelings. Just allowing them, coming back to the question. Really curious now, is it really true it's not safe to express myself? Say again?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure, and that's okay, right? The terror, the fear have been a sign that we have been very sure that it's not safe, now I'm not so sure. It can feel a little confusing to the mind, but it's actually a good place spiritually where we're starting to undo this idea, this belief in this idea. Let's just hang out with this question for another minute or so, you and me, and anyone else that wants to. Is it really true it's not safe to express myself?
Feeling, a feeling of safety being with you and it, like just really like clinging to you or something, I'm not sure if it's clinging or just feeling safe, noticing the sense of safety being together in him.
So perhaps just two answers, the feeling of safety and something that wants to cling, two answers together, wants to grab it, it's okay. And just coming back to the question.
It's that kind of kind of rhythmical kind of pulse or something.
Yeah, like an energy moving or something? The body feeling a bit more relaxed? A deep breath there as well. Doing amazing. So maybe just taking some time each day to sit with this question, maybe writing it down because if the emotion comes up again, might be challenging to remember the question.
Yeah, so I noticed what I wasn't doing when I was doing it by myself as much as, is going right on, right back to the question instead of being with the emotion at all. So it's just letting the emotion come up and then back to the question.
Yeah, and it's not ignoring the emotion or suppressing it because in the openness of the question, the emotion can just be there, it's actually, when asking a question like this, the perfect way to be with an emotion, to allow it to move and coming back to the question keeps our energy open, our system open. We only suffer when we zoom in on one answer. Or you have the emotion or the thought or a contraction in the body. The question is just a way to bring attention back open, let the system open. And naturally from there, anything that needs to move can move and leave, right? We have sensed that many times today while asking.
That's the difference, it's not, not spending time with any emotion, it's not zeroing in on one answer and that's the.
If you look at it, if, let's say if fear came up, there would be something inside that wanted to make it the right answer or a special answer. And all we're doing in contemplation is just to open up and go, there aren't any right or wrong answers, there's just answers. And in that openness, we're naturally being who we really are and we start to feel some peace and relaxation even while there's a lot of negative emotion going on still. So, just practicing like this. Wonderful. Thank you, very brave again. Thank you. Okay, so just to wrap this up, I mentioned at the start, we have two other dates for a meditation session like this and also for self-inquiry. And then probably into the new year, into 2025, we'll also do a session like this for conscious imagining and also statement process as well. All these dates can be found on the website, hellenhamilton.org or Spanish, hellenhamilton.org, I think, I might be incorrect with the address of the Spanish one, but you can Google it. These videos will be put up on the YouTube channels, respectively, the English and Spanish. And we'll come back around after we've looked to the other four core teachings, back to this one again at some point. And best thing to do, if you felt something useful and helpful today, is just to practice a little bit each day, not trying to get it right, just practicing to feel more and more comfortable with a question. While we're asking any question openly, we can't be suffering. And for me, that was the huge relief. Even while I was still experiencing the effect of this belief in my life, I wasn't suffering while I was asking the question, so eventually I just took the question everywhere with me. I took it in the car, is it really true I'm not safe? Is it really true, I'm not good enough, I just took it, my life became a question. And eventually, it didn't even matter what the question was, it was just nice to be open and to be questioning because there we can't suffer. We only suffer when attention is left to remain on this idea and then we feel the emotion and then we experience it as our life. So, just want to say a huge thank you to everyone that's been so brave here to share and to help us all see how this process works. Hopefully you see contemplation as a lot easier than you think, looking at the emotion, finding the belief and then asking that as a question. And even if you don't find the right question straight away, just get started, just try and you'll find the question might suggest itself, you might feel, hmm, this one feels more important. So, last but not least, if you're already, not already part of our community, everyone is welcome to join our community. It's a subscription service, month by month, and there's various amounts. Whatever you can afford to pay, you can become a member of the community. And in the community, there are special classes just for these core teachings. There are also Zoom meetings, sangas, where they're run by students, for students, where we practice contemplation, meditation, inquiry, all of that. And so you can join whenever you want the community, you can leave whenever you want. It's just there for help and support and we're a huge, huge family. So if you want to check that out, look at the website, hellenhamilton.org and you'll see on the homepage there, and the Spanish version too, of course, the option to join the community. And if you need any help at all, you can always email in to info@hellenhamilton.com. That's info@hellenhamilton.com. I tried to remember to put a link in the description too, under this video when it goes up on YouTube. Huge, huge thanks to Pillar and Olga especially for such beautiful translation today for us and helping us all come together as one. Thank you, thank you, thank you all, namaste.